Okay, good evening, everyone. We'll start the planning commission at 6:34. First on the agenda is to adjust the agenda. Does anybody have any adjustments? Hey, Maureen, can you hear us?
Yes, she can hear.
Yes, I can.
Hi, welcome to the planning commission.
Thank you.
Glad to have you here. Did you get the attachments that I sent?
I got, yes, I got some. A little difficult. I don't have access to a printer. I'll be home either late tonight or tomorrow, so.
Okay.
But yes, thank you. I am about an hour outside of Albany. So I'm not terribly far.
Okay, all right. So I think we may have an adjustment. I know Kelly Stettner is here to talk about floodplain management. So we could do that. Oh, actually, we do have that item six, okay. So item three, approved meeting minutes. Did they get posted to the town, Miguel?
I sent them to Jen.
Okay.
So I'm guessing that they did. Because if you got them, then she got them.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. We could go ahead and look at those. And if anybody has any changes. I have one minor change, but we can discuss that. I think Steve Green had mentioned like the damage to his building was minor. Is that, do people concur with that? He had such as some water come in?
Who are you speaking of?
Oh, Steve Green, the old smoking bowls.
Okay.
I think the notes say there was substantial damage, but that's all I have on it.
I don't, I don't know.
Yeah. So.
Do you want me to move that so we can have discussion or?
Yeah, actually, yeah, let's second.
I move that we approve the minutes as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Second, okay.
Or yeah, you want to go ahead and make the adjustment or note it?
Yeah, we could note that. And then just we could send them into the town again amended.
Okay, so amend that portion?
Yeah, that's it.
What adjective would you rather use? Instead of substantial?
Minor.
Minor, yeah. Okay.
Yep.
You know, guys, it wasn't just minor. I mean, if it was minor, I think the smoking bowls would have stayed.
That's a good point.
I think what he was saying.
That was, yeah, that was my reasoning behind the substantial. Because again, if smoking bowls, you know, had it moved or, you know, if it wasn't minor, they may have stayed. So that was the only reason behind the substantial, you know, use.
Can you say damage without an adjective?
Yeah, so did I, it's gone.
So I think he was saying there was three to four inches of first floor water.
That's right.
So, you know, the rule of thumb is a full basement is better than an inch of water on the first floor. So, you know, without a real detailed of where the mechanicals impacted all of that, you know, there is no basement there. So I think it's somewhere between negligible and serious something, so there was, I just think you ought to just leave it damaged.
Damage, yeah, that's good. Okay.
So just remove the substantial, just note that there was damage to the building?
Yeah, that way it just covers all bases.
Sounds good.
Okay, any other discussion?
Nope.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All righty, here citizens. Why don't we just go straight to, instead of item six, we could just talk about the floodplain management and all that, since we don't have any other citizens, unless you have something else, Margot?
No, no, no. I was just going to say Kelly organized through Brad, organized a trip to down to Browellboro to visit the two floodplains, working floodplains they have. That's always a big issue, how do you talk about this? Is restored floodplain, I mean, they're in the floodplain, but these are now floodplains that are helping to do their job and protect the town. And so I had sent out a report before I amended that a little bit and I printed out copies for everybody. And basically, it just summarizes what we saw when we were down there. Bruce McInnes went from the planning commission. Bruce, as you know, is in California. So I just thought it might be helpful, I talked to Timmy about going over this. Kelly is going to talk to you about a steering committee that's being put together. But I will say, after having gone through Irene and then this, this was the first time I felt like there was something extremely positive we could do to help protect the town. So all along, one of the big take home points for me, there was only one floodplain that was actually operational at the time of the 2023 floods. And it was a six point some acres, it was the terrace property. Only had been in place for a year, it was mainly the landscaping engineering, however you refer to that. And Timmy, you may have better words for that, being a landscape architect. But the plantings are there, but you know, they're not mature or anything like that. But that at six acres was really enough to prevent massive flooding in Browellboro. On the Web Brooks. So that was really, really very positive. And then Kelly and I certainly talked about this, and there were a lot of people from Ludlow that came on that trip. But Kelly was the one that sent the map that I sent to you, that she sent out. Timmy, you've worked a bunch on Greven Field over the years.
Yeah, a lot of people have, yeah.
Yeah, and I've really looked at the history of Greven, from when Dr. Greven donated it to the town, Proctorsville Fire Department turns that into a permanent baseball field. So all the kids in Proctorsville play on that field, all the kids in Cavendish play on the Bonds Field. And then when the schools merged, and there was just the one Cavendish Town Elementary School, the smaller kids played on Bonds Field, and as they went in more into the little league years, they went to Greven Field. So there was just one baseball diamond at Greven Field, one at Bonds Field. Well, then in 1995, the Bonds House was arsoned by local youth, and they said, no more using our field, and understandably so. And so there was a mad dash to put in two baseball diamonds on Greven Field, which is what they did. And if you remember, at times they'd use it for soccer in the summer, in the winter, before we actually had Fletcher Fields. But after Irene, where it was really decimated, there was the whole push to really build back better, stronger, add a lot more stuff. They hired a rec director, the town approved a rec director. And they tried a lot of things. They tried, remember the ice skating rink? Well, that flooded too many times, and so they finally just gave up trying to do that. It's been hit by flooding any number of times, and every time it floods, you have to, the town has to go in and redo the road and all that, and that's like around 2,000 a pop. And that's using town crew and town equipment. Is the field, there's now a nature trail around it, and I used to walk that, and I would never see anybody there outside of baseball season. When my kids first started there, and also your kids too, Spencer started in 1993 at CTS, there were 130 kids at the school. Today, there's 61 this fall. And to make up the teams, it's their combination Ludlow-Cavendish teams, and they play in Ludlow. So, you know, after Irene, there was a big queue in Cryta, let's rebuild back and let's do all of this. The select board, I went through my own minutes, the select board said really needed, everything needed to be on skids, it needed to be moved out of there in the event of a flood. And of course, that never happened. Next thing you know, the permanent bleachers, there's permanent this, permanent that, big playground. And so that just made things more difficult when they did flood. There was one attempt to do a fundraiser, there was a GoFundMe, but it didn't raise that much money. I don't know how, you know, it hasn't been brought up to discussion for the select board. But Kelly, you want to chime in here and talk about your thoughts about Greven Field?
Hi, Kelly.
Hey, everybody. I have lousy connection, so I apologize if it poops out in the middle of this. But the Margot's spot on on everything. I don't know if you can see me sitting here nodding. The idea that we're working with is that field, among others in the area, is going to flood, whether there's buildings and fields there or whether there's trees there, it's going to flood, that's the nature of that location. And so the thinking is that we work to establish local, locally sourced native trees, shrubs, plants, grasses in that space after, I don't know, a study needs to happen to see if any elevation changes need to be made in order to make it a more effective floodplain, but effectively planting this area as a working floodplain, so it can do what it needs to do, but also be sort of a stock nursery. So as we have stream bank plantings that need to happen, or other areas that could be planted as floodplain, we can go right there, get our local stock, we don't have to wait for a grant, we don't have to wait for, you know, a contractor who's going to come and bring trees from, let's say Burlington, from Intervale. We've got a local, basically free stock of native plants right there that we have installed. There's a lot of other different partnerships going on with this conversation around managing it for invasives, maintaining sort of a low impact or no impact, the nature trail around the perimeter still, managing for knotweed and other invasives with just mechanical control, no herbicides. And, you know, some nature workshops, some plant workshops, tree identification, teach people to propagate these things and recognize which species are which on their own, so we can have even more resilience in town and in our neighboring communities. So it's a large scale, multifaceted project that really shouldn't require a whole lot of grant money to be pushed into it. And this is the crux of the steering committee, is working with the regional partners and the town partners to see where we can establish more of these small floodplains and plant locally, so that we can continue to enrich the population of native species that function really well on these floodplains and help our habitat and our soils. So I'll stop and come up for air.
So what she's talking about, when we were down at this, and I mentioned this in my report on the site visit, there were a number of people, as I said, from Ludlow. Now Ludlow has a much more complex government structure. They have many more committees, they have a trustee, they have their select board, then they have their trustee board for the city of Ludlow. It's a much more complex structure. So we're kind of a lean mean, hey, fighting machine here in Cavendish. But the feeling was, is that everything we do above and below the river is impacted, so that we should be working together, and the idea is to have a steering committee of Cavendish and Ludlow to really talk about what we can do in the interims, because both Ludlow and Cavendish applied for grant funding. For that, what is it, 70 million, 90 million? I think it was $90 million that's available to cities and towns. And in that would be a flood study, or would be studies of Greven Field. And Ludlow is put in for flood studies up there. Now, they're looking at Timberin, which has already gone now, and they can start looking at that for it. The landscaping or the reengineering of the land itself, how much you lower the banks and all of that to let more water in, that's a huge part of it, and we don't know how much, that elevation's already pretty low at Greven. Are there other areas that could be lowered more? I don't know. In any way, if you really look at that map, it's almost like it's an island. You know, it really is, there's these coves. So one of the things is to have a member from the planning commission and select board from Cavendish be part of the steering committee. So I don't know, Timmy, if you want to do that, since you've had a lot of experience with Greven and you're a landscape architect?
Yeah, I can do that, as long as you're not going to meet multiple times a month.
Oh, no, I don't think, I don't think anybody has time for that. Because where Ludlow is, for example, their little league field, which they want to go back to be a floodplain, they're not going to use that anymore. It still has all its, it's got its buildings, its playground, I don't know if they still have fencing up or not, but that does not help. And so the more we can encourage that kind of a change. The other thing is Fletcher Fields. And of course, I did talk to George, so maybe you can explain this, you're on the Fletcher Foundation Board, right? Is there another foundation up there besides the Fletcher Foundation? I mean, there's the Fletcher Farm School, which is a totally different animal.
Right.
But it's the foundation that oversees that whole?
Yes.
Okay.
The whole property, yes.
So that there's no other board or anything we have to be dealing with over there?
No, but there actually is. What's the Health Center right next door here?
Black River Health Center.
Black River, they own a chunk of land that butts on 103 to the left of the Stepping Stones.
How did Black River Health Center get that?
I don't know, it's like just a little square that's cut out of the entire property. So they would be the only ones that.
Well, we're really talking about the playing field area.
That's right.
This wouldn't really so much impact Stepping Stones area. George said, you know, they would certainly be amenable, but I don't know, I don't think either Cavendish or Ludlow, when they were putting monies in to look at floodplains and that, mention that because it's not our property, even though I think we sort of feel like it is because they manage the fields. And who manages that? Does the Ludlow Rec Department take care of that field?
They mow it, yeah. They mowed the field on the Ludlow side, but that's, they're not mowing that now, because they're not taking care of that. They're not going to mow the Ludlow field.
So who's doing the, so?
It might be Cavendish.
So Cavendish is mowing that?
Is it, okay. Yeah, I think we decided, okay, Ludlow does on the Ludlow side and Cavendish does.
So there was the Ludlow field and there was the dog park, and that's not come back?
Dog park's not coming back.
The dog park isn't coming back, and the Ludlow field hasn't, nothing, I mean, I don't know how much they cleaned up. I know the fencing all came out and all of that. But Cavendish, that side is definitely being used for play, which is fine. I mean, all the soccer games, we traveled with our kids, we went to many different places where it's there in floodplains, because all you do is put up a goal, you don't put up bleachers, you don't put up any of that, everybody brought their chairs. So it's a very low impact kind of thing, and it meets with FEMA regs. The way they redid, brought back Greven Field, never met anything that FEMA would have approved of. So I don't know, first of all, we should probably, some work needs to be done to apply to have that area studied. On the Ludlow side, the question is, does that need to be, would that need to be lowered some? We don't know, there's a lot of invasives, there's a lot of Japanese knotweed.
Well, you have Act 250 too. You know, you have that 50 foot buffer from the river.
I think it's now up to 100. Because that was the thing when we were at Birch, and Kelly, you, correct me if I'm wrong, they were saying it was up to 100, and they had big boulders that marks that 100 foot, where they're putting the riparian forest between the river and that 100 foot mark. So I think they.
That's what the boulders were marking, you're right.
Yeah, so I think that's moved, I think that's a fairly recent change, that that's moved up to 100 feet. But they have tons of knotweed down there, and you almost have to remove the knotweed, even find out which have down there.
And it's just going to come back?
Well, this is the thing about knotweed. A couple of years ago, at Greven Field, we've taken down a lot of knotweed, and Bruce has experimented a lot with how to get rid of knotweed. And he found that if he really stayed on top of it and he mowed it, and it was in constant use, it didn't come back, it finally sort of gave up the ghost. So we did a project over there where we pulled out the knotweed, we do this with the kids, school kids, fifth and sixth grade at CTS, come and do this. Pulled out all the knotweed. He put in a special grass seed formula that he had been working on. And in the spring, the grass came back in and really did keep down the knotweed. But unfortunately, we had the 2023 flood, and that took out everything we had done. So, you know, the kids, we will be pulling out all this knotweed now, and we will have to redo, we will visit there again in the spring and do the same thing. And you do that enough, and then you start putting in other things, and you can get rid of it.
Right, yeah.
That way, because, you know, there's one thing about our town, we have a lot of beekeepers. It's why there's a honey festival here.
Right.
And you do not want to put any herbicide, because the bees love knotweed.
Right.
So that's not something we want to do.
No, I agree.
So I mean, ultimately, the decision making, all of this rests with the select board.
I think one thing I wanted to just throw in there real quick, and I know we're coming up on time here, is that this coming Friday is going to be a workday at Greven with the beginning of the knotweed long-term maintenance plan. And part of that maintenance plan on Friday is to have Mike Bald come down from, he's got a company called Got Weeds. Tim, you're nodding, you may or may not have heard of this guy. He's all in for managing invasive plants mechanically without herbicides, without chemicals. And he would be doing some training with us, some talking with us, and we're going to be setting up an ongoing, like every fall, every spring, several times throughout the year go through. And I know it's not just a small patch, it's the entire perimeter. But the more we can stay on top of this with community volunteers, and I think it's a great idea to reach out to the honey producers. And if we can have specific workdays or knotweed drying stations, they can go through and do their own workday and cut and stack it on a drying station. We're not transporting this stuff offsite, we're not spraying anything, we're not digging and disturbing the soil anymore. So that's this Friday morning, if anyone's interested in stopping by, meeting Mike and participating.
Okay. Well, this has all been interesting. I mean, one thing to consider is, like Fletcher Fields, that's prime ag soil. So I don't know, maybe Kelly, you can help us out, how does that, because I know with, you know, prime ag field, you plow it up and it gets flooded, then all the sediment just gets taken away. But how do you incorporate prime ag land with flood resiliency? Because we don't want to lose our prime ag.
Right, well, the thinking with Fletcher Farm is a similar approach as to what we're doing, what we want to do at Greven, which is to make sure there isn't any infrastructure there, no goalposts, no, you know, backstops or anything like that. And then heavily make sure it doesn't need to be, have the elevation changed at all, and then plant, again, with floodplain species to make it a floodplain forest, to really keep that soil there and help maintain the property as floodplain storage, which would, should help preserve that soil as well and keep it from mobilizing down the river in the next flood.
Okay.
Oh, and I was going to mention, one of the things that we ended up, we ended up starting out with one, but we now are doing a series at the Historical Society involving medicinal plants. And one of the things that people have talked about is making sure that we have at Greven Field sort of like medicinal gardens and plants where we can do tours and talks about that. The idea is to keep it very much, turn it back to, that everyone can use that as a nature path. And when we were down at Birch in Browellboro, there were all kinds of people coming through to walk their dogs, to just walk themselves. It's not a very long path there, they've only got about 12 acres, but people really were utilizing it. And I know when they started out, they were concerned about people coming down there, using drugs. And it turned out, that's not what's been happening. And the neighbors all around had concerns what it was going to do to property values. Well, it actually increased property values. That was, those processes were extremely long there. In the case of Melrose Terrace, they had to replace buildings. In the case of Birch, this was actually, it was owned by, it was a brownfield basically. And so far, what we're dealing with, we don't have any brownfields. However, if Ludlow, if it goes through on the buyouts with the Ludlow Mill, that will probably be a brownfield.
And Kelly just noted in the chat that you need to make sure that the soils are healthy before you encourage folks to ingest or use the plants.
Right.
Because we know that flood wash is lots of other stuff, not just water and sedimentation.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to, yeah, I like the idea of like nature paths and, you know, having people still interact with it rather than just planting the whole thing. I mean, it would be nice if there could be some lawn areas, you know, flat lawn, you know, grassy areas, and not the whole thing, obviously, but.
Obviously, that's something, you know, we have to have the study done, we have to really know what that'll do. And then if the riparian forest is 100 feet, the problem with that for Greven is that it's, you've pretty much got river on all sides. So air, when you come in 100 feet from all those sides, what you're going to have there is going to be minimal. But still, there is a lot of really creative things you can do, and a lot of other people have done it. I don't know in town, and of course, we won't know this until it comes before the select board, if there are people that are really going to lobby very hard for baseball field. I don't know where else you'd put a baseball field in their town.
Well, if they decide to put a baseball field back there, they have to meet the flood hazard regs, the town flood hazard.
Well, if somebody has to enforce it.
Right, I mean, I don't.
Because that's what happened, the select board was very clear, it was supposed to meet FEMA standards, all of that, and that didn't happen.
Right.
And enforcement is always, as Shannon knows, enforcement is a big part of, you can make all the rules you want, but if there's no enforcement.
I know. Okay.
All right.
Great, is there anything else? Kelly, do you have anything else to add, or anybody else have any questions?
Oh, I should add, in terms of, we had talked about having a home, doing something on housing and having a subcommittee, and Bruce is supposed to be the chair that left. I did send out a message to see who wanted to meet, nobody seemed to want to meet, I never heard back from anybody, so.
Okay.
Kelly, did you just write in the chat that she could check with the mascot and the regional commission if Greven is already on the list for one of the assessment studies? And she said that steering committee meetings will start as a monthly thing, if that works.
Sure.
Kelly, that is in the grant, Cindy Ingersoll put that in there for a flood study as part of the grant, which is also what Ludlow did. I'll talk to you. Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Take care.
All right, thank you, Margot. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, guys.
Okay.
Good to talk to you all.
Great. All right, bold business, item seven, bold business, short-term rentals. Actually, let's go to item five, sorry, discuss draft subdivision regulations. We got, the latest ones are October 5th, or October 1st.
October 1st.
So we just got those, so we're not going to make any decisions on whether to do anything tonight. I think we all need to look at them, everybody agrees?
That sounds good.
For the next meeting?
Yeah, that's a lot.
Yeah, I mean, definitely they're slimmed down some, so.
Okay. Make a motion to put that on the agenda for November?
A second.
Yeah, that's fine. And then we can discuss, we should have another open forum, and then go from there, whether, then planning commission hearings, and then it goes to the select board, and they can decide what to do.
You can do whatever you want.
We'll do our job, and then it goes to the select board, whatever they.
Chop it all up.
So I mean, they did cut some things out, there's, look, there's a few things maybe we could kind of slim down, but anyway.
It's definitely better.
Yes.
It'll be your job.
Do you want to, do you want to discuss another open forum date?
We can.
It's up to you, I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, you had it in there, so I wasn't sure if you wanted to discuss it or?
Yeah, we could discuss it, I mean, at this point, it's not going to be November, it could be end of November, but then you're getting into the holidays. We could do beginning of December, or after the holidays, which might make.
Do you have any thoughts?
No, and you're getting into budget season stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Maybe mid-November, if we could try?
We could.
Try for early, mid-November?
Yeah, I mean, we could do it.
Second week or something?
Second week, right before Thanksgiving, that would be good.
You don't get the ball rolling and push, keep it.
Yeah, yep. Then based on that, we'll maybe do our planning commission hearing if everything. Yeah. Yep. And then based on that, we'll maybe do our planning commission hearing if everything. And then that would probably be in February. And then select board. So it wouldn't be up for a vote this next town meeting. There's not enough time. So, but that's up to the select board. They're the ones to send it to the vote, so. Does that sound okay, mid-November?
Yeah.
All right. Okay.
Excuse me, if our next meeting, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. If our next meeting is November 6th, and we have any revisions or anything to that document, how, how much time do we need to warn this meeting?
Oh, the open forum, we don't have to warn it, but we should, we should allow people a couple, like, two weeks, maybe. Or we could go ahead and, go ahead and announce it, and then we can make the revisions pretty quickly. I think Jason can, if there's anything we discuss. Yep, that's fine. All right. Anything else anybody wants to discuss on it, or just wait? Okay. Okay. Old business, short-term rentals, discuss final report or letter to the select board.
I don't think we got much of that into that, did we?
I think we, didn't we decide that not to do anything?
Yep. Yeah.
Yeah.
That it was just too much?
Yeah.
Yeah, just looking at what other towns...
I think we decided leave well enough alone.
Right. For the meantime, maybe someday, it may be needed, but I don't know. Everything I've seen with short-term rentals is like a disaster.
Right.
Everything I've read.
I think we'll just pass.
Right. And I think, you know, like, information, I think that's...
Yeah, we, we did study it quite a bit, and we learned from other towns had done. And everyone's having difficulty trying to set up regulations.
Right. And I think Woodstock, now, they want to limit the number of short-term rentals, which...
They have a, they have an interesting town. It's historic, too.
I think it's a lawsuit waiting to happen.
I think so, too.
You know, that's getting into, yeah, I don't know, but...
So are we going to table that one?
Well, I think we should just sort of finalize it to the, as the select board, just like a letter, it's like, this is what we decided. This is our recommendation. Yeah. I can write that.
Okay.
Yeah. And then that's it.
And then we'll move on.
Move on. And then Margot, she's in charge of the affordable housing, so that's, that's good. Okay. Review correspondence. We did get a letter, or I just got this from the town here. This is, is there another one? It's just a plan. I don't know if I emailed it. It's for Steve Green's building.
Oh, okay.
He got a surveyor to certify the flood hazard, the flood elevation. And it looks like the main floor is, it's like a, just over a foot above the flood, you know, the flood hazard, 100-year flood elevation, so.
Is that within the limits that he needs?
Yeah, it, actually, I don't, according to Rickett, doesn't even require state permit. I mean, we may want to look at it, but if it's out of all those zones, then we don't really have much to say, but, but we have time on that. We'll look at it and see. So. Okay. I think we're marching right through here. And I'll email this to everybody.
Okay.
Discuss any other business? Item nine, anybody have anything? No? Okay. Okay. Maureen, you have anything? Any questions or comments, or being a new member?
Welcome.
Um, not yet. If you would just make sure that my email address is correct on correspondence.
Yes.
That would be great.
So did you get, yeah, what, did you get the, the group emails?
I only, I've only received what, sorry. I've only received what you sent me as a response to my emails. I haven't received anything on a group.
All right. Did you have, and I thought I had your right email. Did you have two different emails, or? That's weird.
I have a few, but if you just use the one that I, I sent you last.
That's right.
The most savage at Comcast.net. That's the correct, that's the best one.
All right. Well, I'll confirm with you when I send out another email, group email, just to make sure you got everything, so.
That'd be great.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
Shall I move for adjournment?
Sounds good.
I'll move for adjournment.
Second. Anybody?
Check it.
Any discussion? No? Motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
All right. Well, great. Thanks, Maureen.
Yes.
And everybody?